Next, item number three, an application for a certificate of appropriateness at 360 Central Park West in the Upper West Side Central Park West Historic District, docket number 16-2565, block 1209, lot 33. This is a neo-Renaissance-style apartment building with neo-Gothic-style elements, designed by Rosario Candela and built in 1928 to '29. And the application is to create new window openings and modify architectural elements.
Good morning Commissioners, Reba Ashby, Preservation Staff. This item is 360 Central Park West, which is a corner apartment building on the corner of 96th Street and Central Park West in the Upper West Side Central Park West Historic District. As you can see from the existing and proposed, the proposal is to create two new rows of window openings along the Central Park West facade, which will create pair six-over-six windows, and also to modify architectural details at the building to accommodate the new window openings. Cass Stackleberg from Higgins and Quaysworth is here to elaborate.
Good morning again. Cass Stackleberg, Higgins and Quaysworth Partners, thank you, Reba. As Reba mentioned, the project addresses 360 Central Park West in the Upper West Side Central Park West Historic District. And I'll just introduce the folks who are with here, our client Joel Herzig from Argo Real Estate and Eugene Bonneron from Central Ruddy. I'll be making the presentation, but if you have questions for either, they're certainly available to answer them. As Reba described, the scope of work is to enlarge window openings along the building's Central Park West facade, and in this line and in this line. And along with that are alterations to some of the architectural details at the top of the building and the bottom of the building. 360 Central Park West was designed by Rosario Candela. It's a 16-story apartment building. It was constructed in two parts. There's what we refer to as the north tower here on Central Park West and West 96th Street, and then a southern portion that extends out and fronts onto West 95th Street. The proposed work is only along here on the Central Park West facade. Looking at a few historic images of the building, this is the Central Park West facade and the West 96th Street facade, and then this is the portion that extends out onto 95th Street. The building and its façades have different treatments in terms of fenestration. And in looking at this work and considering it, we looked at other buildings that Candela did, and in particular, how this modification would fit within the spectrum of his treatments. It turns out, he was actually quite a prolific designer, up to 80 apartment buildings to his credit. And what we found in the modifications that were proposed is that these changes sort of fit within the spectrum of treatments that he designed. To point out here, the Central Park West facade of the building has a variety and sort of a different organization along Central Park West than along the 96th Street and even along the 95th Street side, where you have paired windows on these sides. Here you have single and paired windows and then groupings of three. And so, as you'll see, we believe that our modification actually doesn't alter the organization or the hierarchies that exist on that facade. Some existing photographs of the Central Park West facade, so an overall view of the building. In conjunction with the changes that were proposing along these lines of windows, there's an exterior masonry repair and restoration program that we're undertaking. So there's an effort here to really make this facade, once again, a unified masonry brick-and-terracotta facade, which it has not been for a very long time. So in conjunction with these alterations, there is extensive cleaning, pointing, repair work that will be done. In addition, we've been working with the staff on a window replacement master plan. And so the white painted aluminum windows will all be replaced with new multi-light windows matching the original configuration of the windows, but painted the colors as saddle tan, which we determined based on historic finish analysis. So again, the idea is to unify this facade and eliminate the white windows, put in a more appropriate colored window as part of the work. So a few things just to point out in the existing conditions. When you can sort of see the general organization, there's a hierarchy arranged here with these outer bays, which terminate with just this simple lintel detail, the inner bays, which terminate with a Gothic arch. And as well, there are other interesting varieties and variations that occur under a closer study. This line of windows, which on the interior were two bathrooms backed up, actually have four-over-four windows, where all the other windows are six-over-six. So that four-over-four treatment extends all the way down to the sixth floor, and then from five down, it reverts to the six-over-six treatment. So there's a fair amount of variation that occurs already on this facade. The other thing to point out, obviously, is the condition of the masonry, which you can see in these photos. Obviously, this cracking, the caulk, all of that will be removed. The mismatching mortar, all of that will be cut out and replaced. And the brick that you see that doesn't match the original brick, that will also be replaced. Terracotta detailing, where it's beyond repair, will be replicated. And as well, the proposal really is to sneak a new window opening or expand this window opening to here. And the proposal will be to replicate these details and slide them out one unit toward the corners. At the base of the building, there's a two-story limestone base. The proposal is to double the width of these windows and this window as well, and to modify this element above the entry. Going back to the elevation that you just saw a few minutes ago, the existing elevation seen here, the proposed elevation on the right. Again, the proposal is to double the width of these openings here. But as I said, the effort here is to maintain the hierarchies that exist across this facade. So these Gothic arches remain, and these are detailed by basically just doubling the size of the existing more simple terracotta details on the outside, so you maintain the rhythm across this facade. The other aspect, as I mentioned, at the base, there's a simple limestone detail where the top edge of this bracket aligns with the sill of the single window, and we're proposing to widen that so architecturally, the top of this aligns in conformance to the width of that window. A detailed photo of how this will be, a detailed elevation of how this will be done. Again, you look at the detailing that exists here on the left, and then the proposed, we're taking the ornament that exists on the building and basically casting it or replicating it to create this double-wide condition here. And this recessed brick element with the terracotta will be repositioned just slightly outboard of its current position. A rendering that illustrates a few things. One, obviously, the treatment of the windows and the enlarged openings, but also the repair and restoration of the brick masonry and the new color for the windows. So this is largely how the building appeared originally, but obviously with the introduction of a slightly wider window opening on the outer bays. An overall elevation, a rendering of the building, so an existing photograph, and then a rendered view just showing the goal here, to create this uniform and unified facade, once again, eliminating all this inappropriate mismatching mortar, treating this corner pier and the brick-and-terracotta that need to be repaired. In considering this, one of the things that we did also was we looked at, as I mentioned, how Candela treated the corners of his apartment buildings. He designed many, many corner apartment buildings. And as I said, he was quite prolific. We selected five out of a much larger group, really as a way of bracketing 360 Central Park West in age. So this is historic, on each of these slides, we have historic photographs and a historic plan, and then existing photographs for each of these buildings. And sort of looking at the way the corners in particular were treated, both in terms of the symmetries for the fenestration here at 360, you have beginning in asymmetry with paired windows and a single window, but also the proximity of those window openings to the corner. Was there some sort of treatment that he always did, or was there a variety? And what we found is that there's a great variety in his efforts. The other thing to point out, this is a historic plan, sort of a typical plan of the upper floors. There were small bedrooms. This is the Central Park West facade here. So these windows correspond to small bedrooms at the corners. And the new plan for the interiors is to include a larger bedroom and a living room on opposite corners of the varying units. So what is driving our proposal largely is the reconfiguration of the plans on the interior. But interestingly, Candela obviously arranged his windows in conjunction with the use of the interiors. And so we're carrying that forward, and in a way that we believe actually isn't upsetting the architectural integrity of the building. Existing photos of 360, which you're familiar with, you can see that there's actually a varying distance from the single window to the double window from the corner here at 360. And then beginning it on Park Avenue, one of his buildings in 1923, again, you have this asymmetry with paired windows on the Park Avenue side, the single window on the side street. But interestingly, looking at the way these windows are arranged, again, based on the layouts on the interiors, you have paired windows very close to the coining on the park side, and then on the side street, the single window set very far off from that corner. And that's a treatment that you see repeatedly. On West End Avenue, a slightly later building from 1924, here you have symmetry on either of these two elevations, so single windows on both. And then at the top, similar to 360, this line of windows is treated differently than the main windows across the body of the building. These windows tend to be approximately equidistant from the corner in this example. This is a current photograph of the existing building, where you have a symmetry at the corner with the two single windows roughly equidistant from the corner. Again, on Park Avenue, here, a very different treatment. Single windows, so you have a symmetry at the corner where you have single windows, but a very different proximity issue here, where you have one window very close to the coining and another window quite far away. This detailed photo shows, based on the plan arrangements on the interior, just the position of this window, which is almost abutting with terracotta coining. And then finally, on Fifth Avenue, the symmetries, where you have paired windows on either side, and its existing condition roughly equidistant from the corner. So there's a wide variety of treatments that he explored. We feel that the proposed work maintains the hierarchies and the organization of the Central Park West facade, and doesn't affect in a negative way the architectural reading of the Central Park West facade as it relates to buildings of other facades. And then again, just to conclude, the existing photo of the building on the left and the rendered view on the right.
Addie?
I understand the argument that you're making, and in showing the variety of different designs for the facade reinforces your position. And your position seems, in part, the place of the windows in order to help the configuration of the plan. But it really does seem to me that the corner of this building wants, or the intention originally was for it to be as kind of monolithic and solid as it could be. And so can you go to the plan, to the elevation, drawing elevation? No, the previous, just before.
The big one?
Yeah. Yeah, so I mean, it seems to me that you'd want for this distance to be like this distance, and here you've made them different. And so you haven't really achieved the weight that you'd want here, you know, the space dimension. These are different spaces between these two double-do windows. It just seems to me that the real move would be to make these dimensions equal. But of course, that doesn't give you the window where you want it in that small chamber next to the living room. But it just seems to me that it reinforces the strong corner.
And I think, in terms of its proximity to the corner, I think we feel that there's still, there's an anchor there, that it doesn't get too close. And I think by looking at some of these other examples, it's interesting, because he does play with the position of that last opening and how close it gets to the corner. There's so much variety on this, both in terms of the pier widths, but then also, as I was mentioning, the window openings themselves vary in widths and the configurations. To us, this is maintaining that frame that those two outer lines exist. And then across the tops, maintaining the architectural detailing. It should maintain that composition.
At the corner now, is it symmetrical with the side street?
Right, so what we did, this is not part of our presentation, but we did include elevations. It's at the end of your packet after that last render. So we have bookended elevations. This is the south secondary, oop, this slide. I believe, this is showing the proposed. I don't know, I don't know, Christopher or Eugene, if the current widths of those piers are equidistant from?
They're not. No.
So this is showing the proposed condition, but the existing, let me actually go back to the historic.
So you're saying it was asymmetrical to begin with?
Right.
Yeah, I mean, the fact that it's 96th Street, you know, it's a two-way street. The corner is a more important corner than, you know.
Sorry?
It seems to me that this corner is a more important corner because it's
Because it's two wide streets.
Yeah, two wide streets.
I believe there's greater distance here on 96th Street than there is on Central Park West.
Okay, yes, Roberta?
Okay, so I also, I understand the history, and I'm glad that you're showing examples of other things that he did. But I sort of think that the hierarchy of the elevation is altered. And that what the architect actually had, that rhythm was the rhythm that I think he was going for. You know, it was single, double, double, triple, double, double, single. And that we're making it more monotonous now by changing it to the double at the end. And that at the top, that little distance from that trim piece that comes down is altered in a way that's not, I don't think what the architect was going for. I mean, I appreciate what he has, and I think that this alters everything. But because the building is not a landmark building itself, you know, I'm willing to consider that we can do this. But I think we have to admit that it does, I think it changes.
It certainly changes it. I think the question is certainly appropriateness of it, and what's the effect of the reading of the building? And I think when we've looked at this, because these two elevations, the 96th and Central Park West are so different, if we were actually, if we had, say this was a single line and there's a symmetry here to this facade, and we were all of a sudden introducing a new line of windows that then threw off the balance of the building at the corner, I think that would be, we probably wouldn't be here today, because I don't know that we'd even find that appropriate. But because we have such differently-treated street facades on Central Park West and 96th Street, I think we felt that introducing that line, while it certainly is a change from what Candela had originally planned, the question was whether it was appropriate. And I think we felt like it maintained the balance of the building for the new layouts of the interiors.
Any other questions? Yes, Mike?
I think that Addie brings up a very good point. I mean, for me, when I look at the whole of that facade, one thing is going to be sacrificial. It's either going to be the corner space, and that very clearly is intended to be a strong statement, or it's going to be the difference between what are now the single windows and that space between those windows and the windows next to them. And what I would like to see is an elevation drawing showing that possibility. I mean, not to throw a wrench into the works, but I think then we would have another option.
Then you're losing that historic boss, or whatever one calls it, in between the two windows. You'd have to mess with that.
You're...
You'd have to rebuild that. There's a decorative element, I don't know the proper term for it.
The ones, yeah.
The one at the between second and third floor, that is being used as kind of the spacer between the window bays. That would have to be significantly modified.
That separates that.
It's the bigger picture versus some of the details, for me. I would just like to see a drawing of it, so that we could at least do a comparative study.
So, but the comparative study, okay, leading side, this detail at the bottom, is to put the two windows at the corner, but to shift it so that, in fact, it's away from the corner.
And go in rather than out.
Right. I think, I'm just curious, but in this way, the existing line of windows remains where it is, right? So what you're doing is you're just including another line. I think to move it in the other direction means you have to take...
Do it at both sides.
You have to take out the existing windows and move the entire thing. In fact, it may be more intrusive as a result of that. So I think there's some trade-offs. I'm not sure whether that is necessarily the right proposal either. All right.
But there's a considerable amount of intrusion anyway because of the grotesque repair on the north side and the existing cracks on the outside. They're going to be replacing a large number of bricks in any case.
Right. I mean, the interesting thing, I mean, so the proposal, this is what I just hearing, listening to your proposal, some of the things that at least give me some pauses, that space at the bottom, which, whatever that element is, has to be redefined. I think you have an entire row of windows that you have to move. And then I think it's not clear to me, I mean, we can ask them to do the elevation if I think it will show us the proportion. And of course, yes, we're going to do testimony as well. So why don't we put that on hold right now, that discussion? And are there any other questions for the applicant right now? Otherwise, we'll take testimony and go back to discussion. Okay. Are there people here to speak on this item? Mark Diller?
Good morning Commissioners, my name is Mark Diller. I'm a member of Community Board VII and a member of its Preservation Committee. Our board considered this application, and we were, we did wrestle with some of the issues that you have been identifying today, having to do with the spacing of the windows and so forth. But we were convinced that the sensitive attention to the medallions and other historical detail that line the top was sufficient for the Historic District to make it appropriate. We also were quite impressed with the level of restoration and preservation for the entirety of the facade, which is in very desperate need of attention. And so trying to take a pragmatic as well as an appropriateness standpoint, we found that the entirety of the proposal was acceptable and we recommend it to you. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Max Yeston?
Oh, boy. Max Yeston, Landmark West. "The applicant has proposed a plan to completely change this Candela Building's window configuration. This inappropriate modification is proposed as part of a relatively routine package of cleaning and repair. Perhaps the applicant hoped that LPC Landmark West and others would be so thankful to see this lovely building receiving the attention it so desperately needs that they would miss or simply acquiesce to this huge change. We haven't and we won't. The windows of a building are part of the face it presents to the world. Their placement and considered size and shape are a key design component that Candela likely did not consider lightly when he designed this building. Professor Andrew Delcarre, Director of Columbia's Historic Preservation Program, has stated that, quote, "The narrow windows are clearly a framing device for the facade, which dissipates with the proposed enlargement," unquote. The applicant argues that Mr. Candela would accept their proposal plan if he were here to review it. We have no way of knowing what Mr. Candela would say if presented with a plan which would do such violence to his original design, but such speculation is irrelevant, as are the interior changes proposed. Communication with the dead by Ouija Board is hardly a way to determine whether a proposed modification is appropriate as required by the Landmarks Law." The applicant also argues that the LPC should find this proposed modification appropriate because Candela used the proposed configurations on other buildings he designed. Far from supporting the finding that this massive change in 360 Central Park West design is appropriate, it makes clear that Candela made definite choices about how he would place windows within the context of each of his designs. In the case of 360 Central Park West, he chose to set up the rhythm of single windows bracketing the collection of doubles and three singles now existing. The standard to be applied by the LPC in reviewing an application is not whether or not the modification will be appropriate on another building by the same architect, or if it is consistent with other designs the architect may have drawn, or even if the architect, if he were alive or able to communicate with us from the grave, would accept the modification to his design. The standard is whether or not the modification to the proposed building is appropriate in the context of the building to which it is proposed. Altering 360 Central Park West visual impact by creating a new window pattern that contradicts the original design is the essence of inappropriateness. The applicant is treating an otherwise careful orchestration of window openings like mere repetition or wallpaper. Landmark West CVA Committee recommends that the LPC unequivocally reject the proposal, not simply take no action to have it be reviewed by staff level or to come back with another public meeting with no public input. Reject! In Andrew Delcarre's words, the LPC should say no, no, and no again.
All right, Kelly Carroll?
Kelly Carroll, Historic District's Council. "HDC does not support this application to alter the facades of the premier apartment building designer Rosario Candela. Candela's apartment house designs were not arbitrarily conceived, but as with any designer, carefully considered, especially for a Central Park West commission. The design is misleading, as the terracotta will be identically replicated, making the new openings appear original. The committee agreed that repairing the masonry is a welcome improvement, but not a trade-off for the allowance of these ahistoric window openings. Thank you."
Thank you. Are there any other speakers? All right. Would you like to respond, Cass?
I think, obviously, I sort of talked about the issue of appropriateness, understanding that indeed this is a change to what was originally designed. But what you all do every day here at public hearings is evaluate the appropriateness of change to historic buildings. I think in looking at this and thinking about how this facade was organized historically and how the plans were organized historically, Candela clearly, and looking at the other buildings, which are not meant as a specific reference, but just to sort of understand his approach, he organizes facades largely based on plan and the position of windows and the types of windows. And I think this line of back of windows, which is a little bit different than the others, speaks to that. And I think in working with a building and looking at the interior layouts, which as originally planned, had very small bedrooms in particular, as this building is reused and reconfigured on the interiors, the plan obviously is what drives this change. And so we think that it's appropriate to introduce a new line of windows. I don't think it is an egregious request or proposal. And I think these window openings, while they do frame this arrangement on Central Park West, he framed his openings or his facade in many different ways. And so whether it's a paired window or a single window, it is largely derived from the plan, and one we think that is an appropriate change to the building that really doesn't alter the organization. And just one, if I'm understanding your comment, Mr. Commissioner, about shifting and introducing the openings on either side, my concern is bumping into this.
That's what I think, yeah.
So I think, as it's proposed, we're able to, this is a simple recessed brick detail with some terracotta. Those elements, I think, are sort of more treatable, let's say, than a limestone element. So I think modifying these elements, particularly at the top of the 16-story building, probably are easier to do and will have less impact on the building than impacting those features of the base, so.
You've made a point that, in fact, Candela made these designs and the placement of windows largely based, or to some degree at least, based on the plans themselves. It's unclear to me, at least you had not shown to me, why you're introducing the window based on a plan. So is it a case where the plans have changed and therefore there's a reason to introduce another window?
Yes, so if you turn to, I think it's the last sheet in your handouts, 221. This is the existing plan on the left, which is largely as the building was constructed with a, sorry, small bedrooms at the corners. Very small rooms with smaller rooms organized around this central core. The typical layout as currently proposed now is to introduce a larger bedroom at this corner on the south side, and then a living room on this side. So the idea really is to try and maximize views of Central Park, and by doing so, doubling the width of this opening to this. And again, in this bedroom, which is now a larger room, having a larger window along Central Park West looking out over the park versus this small window that exists today. So there are some interior plan reconfigurations that are associated with what we're proposing.
But not so much at the other corner? On this corner, I can understand. But not so much at the other corner, on this corner, I can understand.
So there are already two windows that fall within this bedroom, and there are paired windows here that exist fronting out to ninety six street.
Right, but, okay, so this, the...
Here, you're saying, I'm sorry.
No, I'm sorry. So the corner over here, which is, I guess, I don't know how to use this.
It's the top half.
Okay. So this, this is Central Park West, right?
Yes.
So here, this building, the room configuration has changed. Here, where you're introducing the window, this really hasn't changed, right?
Well, it's, it's becoming a living room as opposed to a bedroom. So the room is larger.
Other questions? All right. I guess, at least my concern is that, and first of all, I think it's great that you're renovating the building facade, that's wonderful. I guess the question is really this introduction, the introduction of windows, to some degrees seems unnecessary for this plan to work, even if these rooms have changed in their configuration. I don't know if it's, gives enough reason to ask for these windows to begin with. So that's one question. But even if that is satisfied, I think, it seems like there's some concern, at least at this point, whether you want to have such a significant intervention into the facade. Yes, Michael?
Could probably get beat up if I say what I say, if I go outside by Max, but I, I think that, I, I'm having trouble seeing why this is such a heavy lift. I mean, the building is not an individual landmark, okay? So then the question is, what's the appropriateness level? Is it changing the original Candela design for this building? Unquestionably. But is that, is that the standard? I, I think for a building in the, in the district, the standard would be, is it inappropriate to the district? Does this building look like a building that is not appropriate in this district after the proposed change is done? I don't think that's the case.
Commissioner, if I can just interrupt quickly.
Yes.
The standard for reviewing changes to buildings in Historic Districts, are you, you first look at the appropriateness to the change to the architecture, significant architectural details of the building itself, and then after you've answered that question, you then broaden the inquiry to say, is it appropriate to other neighboring, you know, architectural features of neighboring improvements? So there is the necessity of finding appropriate to the architectural features of this building.
But is it, is it necessary? I mean, is there, is there, is it a necessary step that one has to take in order to identify or feel that something's appropriate? To do it first at a building level and to do it then at a, at a district level?
You do it at both. You do it at both.
I think that even on that, even on that score, there's a difference between saying, does the design change the original design, to are the changes appropriate to that design? And, you know, is, is the corner design of this particular building its essence? Is it a critical aspect of it? I, I guess I don't see that. I, I guess I really see the fenestration pattern of the building, I mean, if you look at the other Candela buildings, if you look at other west side buildings, there are buildings that are very kind of formal and aesthetically studied and precise and careful, and there are buildings that are kind of a little bit more casual, and that seem to be generated by their interior layouts a bit more, or at least a balance between the interior and the exterior. And I see this one as, as in the latter category, and therefore I think that it, it merits a little bit more flexibility. Further, I think that the, the point that we're drilling in on about the corner being a massive one doesn't seem to me to be one that the architect himself is emphasizing very much. If that were the case, there would be a corner, a pier that was, you know, projected, or the window bay inserted to emphasize a pillar of some kind. I mean, I see a really kind of a non-directional fabric that's, that's being modified slightly. I mean, I think it's, the corner is exaggerated in the photos because, because the vertical articulation of the, of the terrible repair is shouting out at us. But I think that in the original images and the renderings, this was not meant to be kind of a heavy corner pillar building as one sees in other examples. So, I mean, I think the building that jumps out at me is some of the AT&T wire buildings that are, you know, the Art Deco buildings downtown, where you have this heavy corner pillar with deeply inset windows, or the planes change. I don't see this as a building that's trying to emphasize its corner. I see this as kind of neutral fabric that is being modified slightly, and you're, you're changing one slightly informal fenestration pattern to a, one that perhaps is a bit more formal, and the sacrifice is the relative weight of the corner. So I, I can support it as is.
At the risk of putting myself at, you know, in harm's way with Commissioner Goblum, it, it seems to me that if you were to snap your fingers today and make the changes on these two, two rows of windows, the question I would ask myself is, I walk by, would I know what changed? Would I know what, just by looking at, if you just, if you could just do that, would I know what changed? And honestly, I, I don't think I would.
Okay, so... He would beat you up. I thought he'd be supportive. Agreeing on that.
Not you I'm afraid of.
Yes, Roberta?
For me, it wasn't so much the corner, it was that I think that the elevation and the elements, the fenestration. The fenestration is something that was deliberately part of the architect's design, and it is that rhythm that I mentioned before, and, and I don't think it's like just by accident that he ended up with the, the single windows on the sides. I think that that's the plan, you know, to have the space at the corners, the windows, the singles, the doubles, the triples in the center. I think that this was all his design. So for me, I don't see how then we could just, how we can easily say that we can do something else and that the architect would have wanted it. But, but at the same time, because I know that I look at, and I think many of us look at, buildings in the Historic District, if they're not individual landmarks, a little bit more leniently, I mean, for me, if there was like some reason that this building could not function in another use, or, or that it, it just wouldn't work unless they did, we had to, unless we could add this window, I could possibly say yes. But I don't think that there's like an overwhelming, some pressing reason why the building doesn't work or can't be used without doing that, so I'm not for.
Right, and just, I agree on some of the, I think that was my question as well, which is, do we really need to do this? First of all, I completely agree with you. I don't think anybody at this table disagrees that the design was intended, this is not by chance. I think the applicant has noted, or tried to give their rationale as to why this was designed in a particular way, part of it being the, the shape and size of the rooms at those corners, so it was deliberate. I think their argument is because the room and size, the rooms at the corner are changing, that it's within the context for the fenestration to change, and I think that's their argument. Whether, for me, I think is just, I would generally agree that as buildings are, within Historic Districts have perhaps a somewhat different standard from those that are individually designated landmarks, and there may be more flexibility. But I do see this as quite a significant change to the overall elevation of it, and for me, at least, I don't feel there is a strong enough argument to implement this change.
If we argue from the point of view of intention, my concern is that what it leads to is that any proposal to change the fenestration on that, on that building would of course change the architect's intention. So does that mean that, that's it? We don't consider changes in fenestration on buildings that are not individually landmarked but are in Historic Districts? Do, is that, have we lost the ability to change?
No, we haven't lost the ability. I mean, you raise an interesting point.
It's not, it's all intentional.
Right, I think Roberta's point was just that as a commission, we support the viable use of buildings within Historic Districts and designated landmarks, and we want them to be used and to be, to use to full glory, I guess. I think in this case, as a residential building, the introduction of the window doesn't, either, makes the apartment more attractive, but maybe there is, at least for me, some kind of looking at both those aspects together. I don't know, other comments? Yes?
Well, I mean, the reason that I brought up modification to the change is because I was not ironclad against change, but the kind of change that was proposed. On the other hand, your point about the medallions on the, on the ground floor make me kind of rethink. I rethink whether or not the window should move in one direction versus another. But I, I just want to clarify that I do think that the strong corner, which I don't mean, by that I don't mean heavy corner, which is why I'm not surprised that it's not coined or, or in any other way kind of rusticated, or it's, it's rendered by virtue of the fact that the fenestration information is centered and, and away from the edges, more, more so than it is equal, as you described, a kind of a fabric that's, that's, that's repeated and continuous across the, across its face. So I still think that this corner is an important one that we'd be losing if, if, if the windows were extended and expanded in that direction. But, but I agree with you that the issue of moving it in the other direction is problematic because of these coins on the ground, so I, I don't have a solution yet.
All right. Well, I know some other commissioners are in here, I mean, we could just bring this back for discussion. I mean, I, I've heard different points of view over here, so I, I can also mull that over. We don't have to necessarily put an end to this discussion right now if, if the commission feels that it just deserves some more consideration. Okay? All right. So I think you've heard some of the concerns today. I think it's worthwhile to think about how to maybe reinforce your arguments regarding that, and even if it's about the relationship of the interior with the exterior, whether, what does it mean to change the configuration at the corner? I think these things you can just maybe perhaps elaborate on and come back to us, and you can come back to us fairly quickly if you'd like, next couple of weeks if you want to discuss this again. Okay? All right. Yes. We can close the hearing.